Good morning. We're going to get started this morning with our invocation and pledge of allegiance. This morning's invocation will be led by Ted Inman, our volunteer pastor at the Oklahoma City Police Department. That will be followed by a pledge of allegiance led by a rare collaboration of Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts. We have Eleni Temple representing Girl Scouts Troop 570 and Trent and Ian Morris representing Boy Scouts of America, Troop 15. Please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I want to thank you so much for all you've done for us. We have so much to be thankful. Just yesterday, we celebrated the birth of this great country. And I do pray today for wisdom and for grace for these city council members as they make decisions that affect our city. I thank you for them and their work. Would you give them just everything they need today? So thankful for all you've done for us. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Inman and thank you, Eleni. Thank you, Trent. Thank you, Ian. All right, I call this meeting of the city council to order. This is the first meeting of the new fiscal year. And we will begin with item three, Office of the Mayor. There are no ceremonial presentations this morning, but we do have appointments to bond advisory, Lake Atoka, Maps for Citizens Advisory Board, the Oklahoma City Airport Trust, the Oklahoma City Convention and Visitors Commission, the Oklahoma City Housing Authority, Oklahoma City Planning Commission, and the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust. We could take those items, which are A through H, with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Yes, yes. How would you like to vote? I just to vote I and Councilwoman Nice as well. Passes unanimously. All right. Item four, items from council. So we have here item four A. This is a public hearing regarding an ordinance amending our current gift disclosure regulations. This is introduced by Councilman Greenwell and I believe was presented at our last meeting. Has anyone signed up to speak under this public hearing?
No, they haven't.
Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing. There will be a scheduled vote on that, I believe, at our next council meeting. And we have four B, which is an ordinance to be introduced and adopted with an emergency, amending the Oklahoma City Municipal Code Schedule of Fees relating to development fees. This is represented here by, authored here by council members Carter, Stone, and Stone Cypher. And Councilman Carter, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, sir. As we're going over our impact fees and looking at some different studies that we're doing, at the beginning of the fiscal year, these impact fees are scheduled to increase. And we have just decided that we'd like to put a moratorium on a hold on the increase, not the fees themselves, but just the increase until we get this information from this study back. So we just, we ask that we push this through. Councilman Stone Cypher is actually out celebrating his 40th wedding anniversary today, but has also come along and would like to see this passed as well.
So the ordinance has a, an automatic increase that adjusts with, it's a, I don't remember what it's referred to, but it's a CPI for construction cost. And the idea is it helps when we're collecting the fees, us keep up with the cost, the increase of cost for construction of roads, you know, widening a road or putting in turn lane or doing traffic signals. And so it's an automatic increase. It's there. As we're looking, taking another look at our impact fees and doing some study on comparing to other cities and what they're doing, what kind of discounts they provide, what kind of requirements they place on developers, where there may be some requirements we don't place on developers, we're trying to evaluate all that and just do some comparison so we can come back to the council. This gives us some time to do this. And all this does is delays that increase. And what it does is goes into effect January 1st rather than July 1st. So still have the fees in place, like Councilman Carter said. It just, it just pauses that automatic escalator until January the 1st to give us some time as we're going through this study.
Craig?
Yes.
Any rough idea as to when that study might be completed?
I met with the consultant last week, at the end of the week, had conversations with him about the scope and what we're looking at. He's going to get started. He's going to be out working other, has other jobs that he's working. And so I think September, he thought he could come in. What I want to do is I would like to have some time with council, just to do an impact fees 101, which is kind of how we got to where we are, like what the principle is behind impact fees and the structure that we've got, and then come back and bring back that study. So I still think we're a few months, two or three months out at least to try to get the information together. I think it'll be well before that six-month period, but wanted to go ahead and just make it January 1st. And that way, we didn't just have to come back and revisit that escalator. It's just automatically set there, but gives us time to take a look at these.
I know we've, we've actually done this already as far as talking about those impact fees because I had a resident that was not pleased about having to pay those impact fees for a property that he wanted to build on. And that did not go well as far as that conversation is concerned. And my other, my other concern about this is I know we, you and I, we have our monthly meetings and I talked about this and I don't recall this being mentioned on the agenda for today. So I'm quite concerned that here we are, and I'm looking at it on the agenda when I was asking questions about it last week, as far as what, what the possibilities could be and what we're going to do because there are quite a few others, especially that have already been engaged in this conversation, that would have loved to put our name on this to ensure that we are also engaged in this conversation of what this looks like and how this can impact our residents and especially the folks that have been a part of the conversation before, including myself.
I find this one to be a tough one. I do. Had I not just heard City Manager Freeman's discuss, context about the, about the consultant and that this is just a pause until January, I would, I would actually vote no. But because it's just a pause until that study comes back, I'm going to vote to introduce it. But I can't guarantee you all that I'm going to support this when it's done because when we get to that final one.
Do you want to clarify? I think they're seeking an emergency.
Yes.
So today will be.
Well, then, then we might be in a pickle, y'all.
So, so here's what this one does. This is not look, this does not look at any change in the fees or the structure of the impact fees. What this does right now is just pauses that automatic escalator, the automatic increase. The fees that we were collecting on June 30th will still be collected going forward. It doesn't change anything in impact fees. It just pauses that automatic escalator. So that's all it will do is pause that automatic escalator while we're doing the study. The automatic, the automatic escalator will still take effect January 31st, but the fees will still be charged and collected for the purposes for which they were intended when they were originally approved. We'll still continue doing improvements. We've got studies that have been done. We've got projects that are underway now. We've got the engineering on those projects. We're getting contracts in place. All of that stuff, all of that will continue while we're doing this study. So it won't pause any of that.
Then maybe it's a question for the sponsors. Help me understand, and it's something I've mentioned on this horseshoe, I know we've discussed on this horseshoe many times, the growth of this city in terms of land space. Like, y'all know I am deeply against annexing more land into this city, deeply. And the reason why is every time, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but it needs to come up right now. Every time we let a developer go out there and take previously zoned farm agricultural land and develop it into a housing addition like I grew up in, it puts more strain on this general fund budget and on the, up every bond that will come forward and potentially maxed in the future too, where we are going to have to, look, the next bond I worry in Ward Two is going to be a bit of a conflict where people whose road conditions on the pavement condition index are maybe at a 60, but then we have some at a 30 or 40. And then the people who are at a 60 who have bad roads don't get resurfaced because we have to prioritize the people that are under 50. And I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just saying that I'm going to have a really difficult time going and talking to Ward Two residents and saying, hey, let's hail the victory because we were able to resurface, let's say Lyons Park or Denniston Park, but not Crown Heights or not Britton Heights. And I feel like every time, it's not even I feel, data proves it. Every time we let a developer go out to the more peripheral parts of our city and build housing, it leads to more upkeep on roads, sewer, water, all of it. And we can barely take care of what we got right now. So why would we pause the increase in the fees? Because the fees are then helping us mitigate these costs, we being the city.
So there's a couple of, couple of different things there. Thanks for the questions.
Yeah, thanks for hearing.
One thing too, we ought to think about is like housing costs. We talk about trying to continue to hold our housing costs down. If you want to stop all the development in Oklahoma City, those housing prices would go crazy. Another piece of that is you can talk about property rights. You can talk about, the real question here is what do the developers pay in Oklahoma City on these fees versus what does anyone else pay in any other cities? And we've had some, a lot of discussions on it, I think a lot of us have. And there are some, some people that believe our fees are exorbitantly high when taken in comparison to other cities. And that's the reason that we're doing this whole study is to sit there and say, okay, are we charging too much or are we not charging enough? We'll find out. We want to be competitive with other cities. And, you know, at the same time, if we decided that, oh, those fees need to be cut, then I'm with you where we sit there and go, okay. Now, realize that as we cut these, we got to find those dollars somewhere else. But the main part of this study is just trying to figure out, are the developers being impacted at a higher rate than any of the other cities? And I've seen some anecdotal evidence that suggests that maybe we are, but the study's going to help us find that out. So all we're trying to do is say, let's not do a big increase right now. Let's do the study and see where we rank with the other cities.
And I think too, that on the impact fees, impact fees can't be used like for resurfacing. They're only used for increasing capacity. And so the impact fees go towards like traffic signals, maybe adding a turn lane, something that increases the capacity of the roadway so they can't go towards that. But like Councilman Stone is saying, that if, if we did decide to do some kind of discount or reduce how much we're getting on these fees, which is not what we're doing today, but if we did get to a point that the council were to decide that, then that would be revenue right now. We've got coming in that allows us to do those projects that would put more pressure on the bond issues like you're talking about. So I think it's, it's worth an evaluation to look to see how we compare to other cities. And that's what we're trying to do right now, just see what the comparison is. But it keeps the impact fees in place. We continue to collect them like we have been. It just pauses doing that, doing that escalator.
Also, excuse me, keep in mind that the impact fees are not just general fund fees. They have to be used in a certain area that's impacted by the development. So, and development, say in Ward Seven, you couldn't use the impact fees for that in Ward Two. So it's, it's more limited.
So a couple of things. I understand, and I appreciate the clarification. I understand that it's about the capacity in, let's say, a Ward Seven in Kenny's example. What I'm saying is once you build that street out there, 10, 20 years from now, that street will need stewardship. You see what I mean? We add it to our inventory of what we're responsible for stewarding in this city. That's what I think gets missed in this conversation. Like, I understand how the process works. What I'm saying is every time you build a Northwest 229th Street or 300th Street, you're, you are in fact making it more difficult, we are making it more difficult to find the revenue, whether it's through bonds, whatever, to resurface Denniston Park, South Side Oklahoma City, which I know I've heard our Southsiders talk about a whole lot. Y'all are, I mean, that's just kind of the, the evergreen where people on the South Side feel quite left behind.
So this isn't just for, if we're building and taking in new land, if someone decides to build just down the street here and we need to widen that road, they'll be charged an impact fee for this. If they're, if they build in Ward Two, if we need a turn lane, you know, at 23rd and whatnot, that impact fee goes to that side of things as well. It's not just because we've annexed new land, we're building up north or out west or east. It's right here even in central Oklahoma City. So it, it's affecting anyone and everyone. The building that's going on just down the street right now has an impact fee tied to it.
And the concept behind the impact fees isn't to prohibit growth. It's just to let, help, let growth help pay for the additional costs that are resulting, whether it's interior to the, to the city or it's on the outskirts of the city. So it's, it's that intent of continuing, and we will continue to have that in place now.
So what I'd like to, I under, I hear what you're saying. Like, believe me, I understand what you're describing when you say when we do a project in Ward Two or the urban core, they too take on these impact fees. It's the fact that currently too many developers are building these housing additions along the peripheral part. And again, that's data-driven, what I just said. We know that they've built 21,000 houses out there and the demand is 7,000 Oklahoma City into need that housing. So every time they build out there anticipating that sort of growth, when they could be doing it right here in the urban core is infill, that's the problem. That's what I'm saying is the problem. So I guess my only way out of this.
Can I help with that?
Oh, please, please, please.
Because if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong, what this is going to do is help us in, in that conversation because when we're looking, we're not just looking at residential, we're looking at commercial as well. So this is all facets of what impact fees have done for those developers developing commercial and/or residential. However, in that same lens, as we look at some of those cities that we're comparing ourselves to, that have done this previous work, they have been able to incentivize these same developers to bring the affordable housing concept that you're talking about in their development, whereas right now we don't do that.
Right.
And we have, how much million sitting in our impact fees right now?
I'm sorry. On the traffic impact fees, I know we've collected about $30 million since the beginning. I don't know exactly how much is remaining in there right now, but that cannot be used for incentives. It can only be used for expansion of the traffic system.
Exactly. So we have money sitting that we need to do something with, and we have developers that call constantly asking for roads to be repaved because of that development that they're doing. And now other developers may be coming in light industrial areas wanting to develop as well. And then you have traffic. You have things that happen. And so this can help us in ways that we need for our city, especially with the pandemic. You know, now we have to get a little more creative and understand how we can make sure we're taking care of our residents when it comes to the lens of affordable housing, when it comes to the lens of just developing commercial properties in general, especially for those areas that have been underdeveloped or underserved in the way that we want folks to come and say, here's some areas where you can do these things. Now let's see how we can add the traffic signals, if there's a way to maybe possibly, and correct me if I'm wrong, if there's a way to add walkability infrastructure around those traffic signals to make sure that we are taking care of those residents as well. So that's how I understand what we're looking at. And in the lens of what just, what happened with a resident that I have, it was an unfortunate incident. And while I understand what he was saying, because our hands are tied and what has already been done by our city council previously, there was nothing that can be done. So now we can actually look at that and see how maybe what happened to this person and other residents that we talked to and other developers that we talked to, we can move forward in a different light.
I appreciate that.
I'll just, I also just wanted to add something because I recently have been talking with a group that's interested in some, I would say, capacity enhancement for an area in the ward and, and traffic calming, wayfinding, et cetera. And in that meeting, I learned that the zones that we have for these impact fees are sort of unruly, like, and that like, depending on where the development is, sometimes they will install, already have to install a traffic light, but then they're paying the development fees on top of that, when in theory, the development fees probably should have been for that traffic light. So I think there are things that we need to analyze about the, the process and the structure of the fees because in my mind, like, the impact fees make total sense to pay for this capacity enhancement. But I think part of what we need to do in the, if we can have the consultant look at this, is define what increased capacity means. Because I think it also needs to, to Nikki's point, speak to walkability, connectivity, and potentially transit. Because that, to me, that is a better use of those capacity dollars than simply how do we get single occupancy vehicles out of a development as quickly as possible. So I think, you know, I, from my perspective, it's like we really need to analyze these zones that they're in as well as kind of define what capacity means. Because I think right now, the way I understand them and that we have all this money sitting there that we apparently haven't really spent much of is also a concern. Because if we're talking about that we needed these to increase capacity or, and it's like, well, none of that has happened and it seems like we're doing fine. So, you know, I think, I think there are things that need to be looked at in this. And so I'm, I think, I think this makes sense to try to just kind of pause and see, see what we can do to really improve this and make it work better for both developers and our residents.
And I think a lot of the questions that are raised here is, one of the reasons I want to go back and do kind of a 101 so that we can step back and look at this, there are state law limitations on what we can do and how, how capacity is defined. And so we have to follow that as well. I think that's why we need to do a deeper dive on some of that part of it, but then also looking at what this impact is. I think to answer the question about why these funds are just sitting there and haven't been used yet, we stepped back, we stopped making developers do an impact fee or a traffic impact study when they do a development, and we started doing those. We did traffic impact studies throughout the city and identified projects that need to be accomplished for the, that increase capacity. We've come back then and done the design on those projects. So all of that has taken time to get us there. We've got a list that exceeds the $30 million that's there, a list of projects that need to be done. So the work is on its way and it's just taken time to get that started and we're a good place now to keep that going. But all of this is, it's worth us going back and comparing to other cities, seeing what they're doing in the fees and what they're requiring of developers, and being able to be in a position to move forward.
Well, I appreciate the discussion and thanks for responding to my questions too. Could this consultant, when I heard Todd talk about the comparisons to the other cities, what makes us unique and what I'd like for them to maybe look at as well, is the 621 square miles that spill over into the farmland of Tuttle and, you know, the, the exurban part to the city. So I think what I have learned when it comes to just urban life is if you're in a city where you have mountains or an ocean, something natural that limits where you can build, that's one thing. But when you have something like we have here in Oklahoma City, developers look at that and it's like a game of Pac-Man, right? Can we compare specifically two cities that have this sort of sprawling, lack of restrictions in terms of geographical, do you see what I'm saying here?
We'll try to broaden that perspective, you know, the cities that we're looking at and comparing to. It's difficult to find cities that have the same kind of size that we have because there are not many that have that same kind of size in terms of the footprint of the city itself geographically. But we'll, we'll ask them to compare in a lot of different types of cities, particularly larger cities.
I think that'd be very, very helpful so, because we're unique in that way, as you're pointing out. And then to what I just heard from Councilors Hammond and Nice, I've asked for this, but I was anticipating it going into the next bond, but I'd like ahead of time, if they can look into for us, this incentive of, you know, we have conscientious developers in the city. We saw a lot of them at the Congress for Urbanism, who are, who would love to build infill all throughout the urban core, Capitol Hill, you name it. And they'll tell us, and Todd and I talked about this on our drive, they'll tell us, you know, that it becomes cost prohibitive to rehab an existing fourplex or eightplex that was built 100 years ago or to do the infill development. And I'd like to find out how this can be part of that conversation about incentivizing them to do it. Because if we don't, if we don't figure that out, there will always be that extra profit motive to go out and gobble up Sally's Farm. And I just, I, and I really worry that I think the more gobbling that happens out there, the more resentment eventually will build from the farms, from the people who own those farms. It's going to give this sense of the big city encroaching upon them. And I think we've always got to think of ourselves as complementary to the different types of lifestyles, whether it's farming, agriculture, downtown density, et cetera. And it's just, it's something I've heard for years and I would like for us to avoid that fate. So is there, can we be looking into that as well?
What we can do is come back with, in that 101, talk about how, how impact fees can and cannot be used. And we'll make sure we incorporate all of that in the conversation.
Okay. All right. Well, just with caution, then I'll join you all in this.
So I move for approval.
Okay. So there'd be two votes. So first, we have motion for approval.
We'll see.
Got a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. And then someone votes, or someone motions the emergency. Councilman Stone motions the emergency. It's required seven votes. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously and with the required seven votes. All right. Item five, City Manager Reports. Mr. City Manager?
Yes. We have Teresa Rose Crook here to give us just a presentation, an update on the Community Cares Partners and the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. We had some conversation about this, and Jenny is here as well to talk about the program. We had some conversation a couple of weeks ago about the change in the contract where we're increasing and being able to use some additional funding. They've been managing this program on our behalf, and I'll just let them give a presentation on what's been accomplished so far and where we are with the status of this program.
Thank you. Good morning, Teresa Rose, Communities Foundation of Oklahoma. And it truly has been our honor to be able to contract with the city among other jurisdictions in dispersing these funds and getting them out to the people and our residents that really need them. This is Jenny Bascarl, and she is the person, the Executive Director for Community Cares Partners. She's got the details, so I'm going to let her share with you an update.
You can answer them.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Good morning and thank you all for inviting us to be here today. We greatly appreciate it. As Teresa mentioned, our team of about 150 people managed this monumental task of dispersing nearly over $400 million of emergency rental assistance. We've contracted with the city and to date, we have spent all of your ERA I funds, which was the first contract that you approved. That's what came through Congress in December of 20, it's all run together now, of 2020. And then ARPA in March of 2021 passed Emergency Rental Assistance II. We call those ERA I, ERA II. So ERA II is what we are currently spending. And with those funds, we are assisting renters whose income falls at or below 80% AMI, who have suffered a financial hardship due to directly or indirectly or during the pandemic, of which of course we are officially still in. And then the other thing is that they have to have a risk of housing instability and that housing instability can, it's, a wide range of factors mark you for housing instability. All that to say is very few people, very few, who actually submit an application to CCP do not qualify. We have about a 5% fraudulent rate, about a 5% denial rate. The fraudulent rate has greatly increased. We are in regular contact with Special Agent, with the U.S. Treasury, with the Oklahoma City Police Department, and now with the Attorney General of Oklahoma to try to stop that for, because every time we have to spend our efforts trying to go after these alleged fraudsters, it means less time and effort that we can spend on the people who really need the assistance. And the assistance goes from individuals to families, and we have And the assistance goes from individuals to families, and we have a little subsector here of also, we have been incredibly welcoming in this state, and particularly in this community in Oklahoma City, of the new Afghan neighbors that we have. And that has been a real successful, multi, multi, multi-partner orientation of gathering partners together, from Catholic charities, to the city, to the state, to CFO, and philanthropists, and agencies across town, including the continuum of care through Homeless Alliance and what have you. So it is, it has been a very broad-ranging thing. Our current plans are very fast-moving, because we are narrowing the end, and that includes, we have currently ceased utility payments. Utilities were only about 12% of our total cost, yet they were 55% of our applications. So in other words, a whole lot of money with not a lot of money out, and when you have timelines to spend money, that's a factor. There are also other groups, and we are referring them to other groups, from Laheep to some local, you know, the Salvation Army's and things like that. So that was first, because really, emergency rental assistance is that, just that, it is to most positively as you can, impact those who need stable housing. So we're paying rent, rent, and rent. And then the other thing we're going to be doing coming up, I need to let you all know, is, in the next few months, we will be closing the portal, because our pool of applicants is so large, we will, we will reach that magic point, that tipping point, where we have sufficient, more than sufficient number of applications to the money we have remaining. So that'll happen. We anticipate spending down all the money, the city's money, along with our other jurisdictions, like the state and the county, by the end of the year. Now, what that means is, there will be a lot more evictions, without a doubt. We're already seeing some dockets over 300. That's a docket, that's not a week. A docket can happen five to 10 times a week in Oklahoma County alone. We have now surpassed Tulsa in our number of evictions. Tulsa before the pandemic was 12th in the nation, and we were 20th. They have not, eviction law has not taken a full count since the pandemic started. So what we're doing is, we have 10% of this budget that you all gave us, and our other funders gave us, that the government said we could use for housing stability. So we put our heads together and got really creative, and started thinking, our mandate is very, very narrow. However, we're going to push as hard as we can with whatever flexibility we have, and we're going to try to make a difference, and we're going to try to set some things up for future success. We can only eat this elephant one bite at a time, so we're taking some baby bites, because that's all we have. What we're going to do is, we are looking at funding universal representation, which is another term for right to counsel, but you call it universal representation when it's not mandated, especially at the state level, or any kind of statutory mandate, working with legal aid for that. And I'm sure you all have heard from Michael Stevens, Michael Figgins, and he can give you all the things about the positive impacts that that has, and the, it's very, the outcome measurements on that, there's hard data, so that's really positive. The other thing is a thing called legal links, and that is going to allow us to train people in agencies literally across the state, several here in Oklahoma City, that will be, basically, think of it as legal first aid, so when someone comes into a social services agency or other agency, they'll recognize this, that this is really a legal problem, you need to collect child support. That helps you become stably housed, if you have that source of income. You need your veterans benefits, you've got all these fines and fees, all these things, there's so much that's legal. Granted, I'm a lawyer, I'm not trying to, you know, keep my job any longer, but it really is amazing how many legal barriers there are, that are in the periphery of being stably homed. And then the other thing we're doing is, we're looking to set up a landlord-tenant resource center here in Oklahoma County. We will be coming to you all to update you further on that, if you so wish. And there, we're working off of a model that is actually in Tulsa County, they call it the hub, Landlord-Tenant Resource Center, it's under Housing Solutions, it's a lot of, it's really, it's another great example of public-private partnership. And think of a West Town for the Homeless Alliance, or Diversion Hub, or Palomar, a model like that, where you bring in a lot of different agencies to be there for wraparound services for tenants when they need help with housing. The really cool thing about this model is, it also goes out into the community, so it will go to apartment complexes, and it's at the invitation of the landlords, so it really is bringing the landlords and the tenants together, working on this. We see one of the biggest problems that we have noticed doing this at an at-scale level is the lack of communication. A tenant is scared, they can't pay their rent, so they shut down. They shut their door, they lock their door, sometimes they leave, instead of going to the landlord and explaining, because some landlords have been incredibly reasonable and wonderful to work with, others, quite frankly, are scum of the earth. And so, and there are also, there are bad tenants, just like there are good tenants. But the better we can have communication, and the better we can give outreach and education to let people know their rights and what's going on, and what the possibilities are, we think that that will start to make a dent into this problem that we have, with people not being able to be stably and safely housed in places that actually have air conditioning. We have tenants that have had requests for new air conditioning for four months. So there are some real problems that are beyond our scope, but we can certainly shine some light on them. We, we can't build affordable housing, but the good Lord knows we need more. But what we can do is, what we're trying to do, and try to do it really, really well, and because of the support that you all have given, and the, this little 10% that we can use, we may be able to at least start setting some things up, to get some legs on them, so we can basically incubate them, and then by the end of next year, make sure they can stand on their own and continue to serve this community, and provide the economic housing and community and social relief that is needed. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Yeah, thank you. So, my question, since this program is, is titled Emergency Assistance, Rental Assistance, are there other forms of assistance available to individuals that need housing that you all could refer them to? And the reason why I bring this up is, I, last time, I used an example of, of medical care. If a person continues to go into an emergency room for similar problems, a perceptive physician will eventually refer that person to some other physician to see, is there some problem with their ability, you know, in some other area, long-term care? So, that's my question, are, are you limiting your assistance to emergency situations and not long-term needs?
It's a multi-pronged answer, because you raise a really great point, is that the word "emergency" on year two and a half tends to be diluted, to say the least. But yet, the, the problems are both acute and chronic, and so to try to treat them together, we recognize that, as a checkbook, we are a Band-Aid, but the problem, the, the solution is not emergency rental assistance. The solution is, is much further upstream, but you still need to stop the bleeding. It doesn't mean that you don't do the brain surgery, but his leg is still bleeding out, so, you know, fix the leg. So that's the part that we play, and that's the only part that we can play. We do see, David, a lot of people come in to, to us, from really kind of two angles. One is those people that this has been more chronic, it has been long-term, and they have been actually unfortunately at the eviction court way too many times for any human being to have to be there. Then others, it has become, there's a crisis going on, it's a job loss, it's illness, it's, you know, a death in the family, whatever those crisis moments are. So they're coming in from both reasons. They all qualify under the statutory guidelines that were set out, but that, it really is, and so I, also I recognize the fact that there is not one answer to this problem, and it's a problem that unfortunately, and fortunately, because of a program like this, we're able to shine a huge spotlight on, so we're no longer hearing little one-off things, we're seeing it on a mass scale. So what we can do is, is some things, and we do have 35 partner agencies across the state, of whom about 12 are here in Oklahoma City, that provide more of the wraparound-type services, think of like a Homeless Alliance that does the rehousing part, as in Capitol, but also Palomar, because we get a lot of victims of domestic violence. And then with Diversion Hub, we, people are coming out of being, you know, in the, the system, through prison or through jail, coming out just as involved. So we start to hit a lot of those parts, we do work a little bit with, with the Veterans Administration. So yeah, we're seeing them at that, kind of that base level, because people say, well, you're not paying my utilities now, I'm like, that, I get that upset you, but if you don't have a roof over your head, you don't have utilities to worry about. So housing, to me, is really root, 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 and so it's, it's an incomplete answer to a very important question.
So can an applicant, in theory, continue to request emergency assistance for, say, 24 months?
No, the statute limits it, so under ERA I, you could get up to 15 months of assistance. Under ERA II, they added three months, so you could be eligible for up to 18 months total.
Okay.
We have, because we saw such a large quantity of need, we have made, oh gosh, it's been several months ago, before April, is we end up serving people once. So if you come in with 10 months of arrears, we can pay that, plus three months forward, so that's 13 months. If you come in with two months, we can pay two months and three months forward, that's five months. So it's kind of the one-and-done deal, and then we try to hand you off to other agencies that can help you stand up, because there's a little, this is no shock, there's a little entitlement also that's going on, because we've been so long, both from the landlord and the tenant side. Hey, there's all this federal money, let's go after it. So we are trying to really be concentrated on that, emergency, one-time rental assistance.
Thank you. So that's what I was, my question really was focused on, so you're going to assist someone probably one time. Now, it can cover a longer period than one month, but it's usually just one time.
Absolutely.
Okay, so let's move into the fraud section. How do you know that somebody has committed fraud?
It's a long list, we have red flags, and we have, we've trained and trained and trained, we actually have a certified fraud investigator on our team, and she leads our fraud investigation team. She's been amazing, and she has picked up on things, one, we've uncovered up in New York, and he'll, he's probably, I can't think about how many millions he's built others for. There's one in Tulsa, there's several here. So we look for the red flags, we look at documentation to see things that are fraudently documented, we look at ownership, and as you all know, in real estate, it can get really layered.
Right.
So we look at, at all those things, we have some that have offered their tenants a bonus to apply for rental assistance, so we try to catch that. So that's, we, we just have, we have a team of about six, that's all they do.
Good, thank you. No, that was the other area I was concerned with, because-
Yeah, sure, you should be.
Since this past spring, there's been numerous Inspector General reports from large federal government divisions indicating rampant fraud, and so 5% is, is a very good number.
No, we have one of the lower ones, I'm on a national call, and ours is really good, it's nothing like you heard about with some of the other early stuff.
Yeah.
You know, going, that unemployment thing, that was huge.
Right.
We've had a few dot RUs come through, we immediately just take those, and if they can fill out an application in one and a half minutes-
Uh huh.
No.
Okay.
So we have some just kind of standardized things, and otherwise, we'll do deep dives, everybody, every tenant, not landlords, every tenant is entitled to one appeal, we will dig deeper, and we have just signed on with Thomson Reuters Clear, so we have access to even more databases to check things. So we really have ramped it up. As the need has increased, we've increased our efforts.
Well, thank you for coming down here and explaining all that, that's very helpful.
Happy to, anytime you all have questions, happy to be there. And thank you all again for your support, it means a lot, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it, appreciate the partnership, too, you all have been great partners with us, in many ways with these programs. The other item that we have on is the, there's two others, the Claims and Payroll is on, but we also have the Sales and Use Tax Report for June, so it's our final check for the fiscal year for fiscal '22. Again, a strong sales tax check, 7% growth, it's slower growth than what we've had, you know, we've been seeing double-digit growth, we finished the year at about 16%, so very strong sales tax, the highest sales tax growth that we've had in more than 30 years. And so, you'd have to go back, actually, it's when we were coming out, recovering from the oil bust, where there had multiple years of decline, there were double-digit decline, and so very significant increase going through the pandemic and, and coming out of it. We still, even with the budget amendment that we did, we still finished the year about $3.7 million above on sales and use tax. If you look at the use tax check, it was about 100% above last year, and part of this was, there was a significant refund that was from previous years, it was granted, and so, or, that was a correction, actually, and so we got that recognized on the books this time, so it's for previous periods, so that helped to, to push that number higher, but still finished very strong, and looking at next year, we'll, we'll be communicating with you as we're watching sales tax to see where we are. If you remember, we finished the year, because we finished so strong, our sales tax, we'd actually been projecting originally for flat growth, you know, for just to stay flat, we actually ended up, because such strong growth at the end of the year, it's about a 2% decline is what we're projecting next year. I think watching for, on the horizon, the potential of a, of a recession, and we keep hearing, you know, talk about that potential with the growth in inflation and all, the potential for recession, we're monitoring that, and we'll keep you in tune as we start to get the revenues in for the new fiscal year.
Great. Excuse me. I hate to ask additional work from your staff, but could we get a comparison, not in terms of dollar amounts, but in terms of percentages of growth with other comparable cities, in terms of sales tax activity? I just think it'd be interesting, now, I know every state has different sales tax rules, but I think we could still gain some perspective by looking at changes, percentages of changes, going back maybe two years, and just see how we compare-
Okay.
-with others. Are we that unique, or is, have other areas of the country experienced similar types of growth? To some degree, I think with all the influx of, of government spending, that contributed greatly.
I think you're absolutely right, I think, and inflation affects it, too, you know, the growth, the significant growth in inflation has an effect on the sales tax as well, so both of those will be a factor, and I think you're right that we'll see that in other parts of the country as well, it wasn't just unique to Oklahoma. We can look at other metro cities, but really what you're thinking of is how other cities outside of our general area were affected by sales tax, and what their sales tax growth is now compared to what it has been.
Yeah, for example, I mean, Kansas City, Wichita, Tulsa, Little Rock, Dallas, Fort Worth.
Yeah. We'll pull some information.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
That's all that I have on city manager reports. All right. Well, item six is Journal of Council Proceedings, we have items A and B, we could take with one motion. We have a motion in a second, cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item seven is Request for Uncontested Continuances. Item 11L is listed on the agenda as being deferred to July 19th. Are there any other items that you have, Mr. City Manager?
We, we do have, I need to do one housecleaning thing here as I start. Nikki, you'd asked about, Councilman Nice, you'd asked about deferring item 11R. Do all the applicants, or all those that were involved, are they aware of that, that it's going to be deferred? So Councilwoman Nice had requested that we have a deferral in item 11R, this is the one that we had heard last meeting, that was related to the appeal on the Traffic Commission granting of a stop sign being, being placed, and so she'd asked that we defer this for two weeks to the 19th.
Okay.
And then, if you go to page 20, item 1101, Unsecured Structures, I'm sorry, yeah, that's right, page 20. All of these items will be stricken from the agenda. Item B, 4913 Creekwood Terrace, the owner has secured. Item G, 5112 Madera Terrace, the owner has secured. Item H, 2142 West Park Place, the owner has secured. Item J, 2905 North Vermont Avenue, the owner has secured. Item S, 1120 Southwest 40th Street, the owner has secured. So that was all under 1101, Unsecured Structures. Then on 11P1, this is on page 21, Abandoned Buildings. Item, these are all stricken from the agenda, item B, 4913 Creekwood Terrace, the owner has secured. Item G, 5112 Madera Terrace, the owner has secured. Item J, 2905 North Vermont Avenue, the owner has secured. Item S, 1120 Southwest 40th Street, the owner has secured. And that's all the items that I have.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Item eight is Revocable Permits and Events. Item eight A is a revocable permit with the Fallen Heroes Half Marathon Scholarship Committee for the Fallen Heroes Half Marathon on September 24th. We don't have anyone who has signed up to speak on this item, but it occurs in wards six and seven, if either council member would like to speak to it.
Yeah, move for approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second, cast your votes. All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eight B is a revocable permit with the Riversport Foundation for the World Paddle Fest, August 26th through the 28th. And we do have Tegan Malone signed up.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. It's lovely to see you all again. We had the pleasure this last weekend of hosting Councilmember Stone, and one of his passions, so I hope you guys at least got to see some footage of that on the, on the live feed that we had. What I'm here to talk about today is the World Paddle Sports Festival. This is an event, pardon me, a three-day event that we will be hosting, August 26th, 27th, and 28th. These are sprint canoe kayak races, as well as stand-up paddleboard races. These races were originally scheduled to be held in Russia this year, but because of the ongoing conflict in Ukraine, and the International Olympic Committee pulled all of the athletic events out of Russia. Oklahoma City was poised and ready, and already putting in bids for future years, and they asked us if we would be interested in hosting these two events. And this will be the first time we have ever hosted a stand-up paddleboard event, so it's a brand-new thing for our city, and we're very excited to have it. In conjunction with this event, we will also be hosting the Red Bull Rapids at the very same time over at the Whitewater Center. It's going to be an incredible weekend, very, very jam-packed full of events, and we hope that everyone will be able to come out and, and join us for some of the festivities.
Yeah, this is exciting, and of course, this is, this includes the events that we ripped out of Russia, which I'm perfectly happy with, so these are great. Any other comments or questions? Of course, this is happening in Ward seven, Councilwoman Nice, if you want to say anything.
Yes, I will say paddleboarding is a sport, that if you've never done it, you probably should at least try it one time. It's quite fun. So I'm eager to see what happens for the World Paddle Fest, myself and all of the events that are happening. So it's a busy time, and quite excited to approve this event.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Tegan, for all you guys are doing. Okay, now we're going to recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through J we could take with one motion.
May I just make a comment?
Sure.
No, normally, we might not find ourselves doing that. I just want to point to item A, particularly for my Edgemere, Central Park, Jefferson Park, and Paseo residents. This has long been something they've been asking for. For those of you who don't know, there's a church that burned down there at Harvey and 30th. And it has just been sitting in, like, old LA earthquake-type ruins this whole time. And so residents have been reaching out for some time about this, and it was caught up in a whole dispute between past owner, present owner. And I just want to thank code enforcement for communicating with residents in that moment, because there was so much frustration. And so this is a, it might seem like a small moment, but this is a huge deal for our, for our part of town. So I just want to say thanks to everyone involved for making it happen. In fact, thank you, Chad.
Okay. So we're still back on items A through J. If we went, oh, we do have a motion and a second. I'm sorry. So as soon as you get the chance, can cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Okay, now we'll adjourn OCMFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through E we could take with one motion. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now we'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on item nine, the Consent Docket. And there are scheduled presentations for item BC, CS, and then sort of one presentation covering items CW through DA. And then that is it. So is there any other item that a council member wishes to pull out for a separate vote, or a separate comment or question?
I have a few. Item CH.
CH?
Yes. Also, there was a couple more, excuse me. Item, as we look at item K and N, just a couple of questions as far as some of those renewals and the process.
That's, I'm sorry, K and N?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, another one, I'm sorry. Item B, as in boy T, as in Tom.
ET. Okay. Anything else?
Are, are we getting something for D, you said DB is part of that presentation as well?
Uh, no.
Okay, I'd like a presentation for DB.
Okay. All right, then, we will take them in order, which means we'll start with K and N, Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, I was just curious as far as when we look at the process of renewal of contracts, and I understand with the few that I had marked, that they are renewal contracts for every two years, but every year, for us to be able to acknowledge that contract. Just curious, again, as to the process and, and how we can ensure we're getting a diversity of, of pool of folks that can be a part of these, of this process, and, and what needs to happen in the timeframe for that to happen.
Charmeline. So, sorry about that, they were just coming in. So Charmeline Vickers is our purchasing agent, and she can talk about the contracting process. So Councilwoman Nice was asking about what we do to make sure that it, when we do these contracts, that we have a diverse group of applicants or, you know, vendors that can do business with us, and how we ensure that in the process, and what kind of process we work through.
Okay, hi, Councilwoman. My name is Charmeline Vickers, purchasing agent, and so the question is, how do we go about procuring our contracts and vendors that we solicit?
Right. And then, and then, Councilwoman Nice, you want to explain your question, too, on the diversity?
Yes. As I'm looking at the renewal of the contracts, my, my question arose because of us being able to extend as far as us, with these particular contracts, every two years, but the renewal every, every year. How can, what is the process to ensure that we're getting a diverse pool of other applicants that can be a part of this process, and the timeframe that those folks should apply to be a part of, of the timeframe to be considered?
We use a electronic platform where we encourage all of our interested vendors to sign up through the platform BidSync. That's B-I-D-S-Y-N-C. And not only that, we work with our small businesses to where we, in the past, we were not, as you say, registering those vendors, but now we encourage those small vendors, small businesses, to register with the city, and we set them up on a different pool listing, and to where it's also, if they're not able to, to bid on some of our larger projects, we do encourage departments to reach out to those vendors that we have registered as small businesses, and allow them to at least quote, you know, be able to quote their services and products, so that we can get to the point where we're having more of a, of a closer relationship with our small businesses in our process. So once our contracts are awarded, most of our contracts are awarded for one year with two one-year renewal options. So theoretically, so long as we're not having any problems with that contract, once we award it, that contract usually remains in place for three years. Sir, did I answer your question?
Yes, and I guess the additional question as far as those small businesses, because as we're in the community and talking to folks as far as what they're, they're wanting to be a part of our city process as vendors, what would be the best way for me to get those businesses that reach out, you know, particularly to us as council members, to say, I have a small business, can you help? I would like to figure out how to work with the city. In, in, in this, I understand, you know, all the BidSync and the process, and I think just you bringing that caveat of small business is something new, and I'd like to figure out how we can make sure we get more of those small businesses engaged.
Well, you know, as always, they can always reach out to procurement, and we've also partnered with, it's an agency called PTAC, where they work with small businesses. And so they're familiar with our process as well, the city process, and they work with a lot of small businesses. And so we recently had a meeting, you know, with them, and they asked, how could we help? And some, sometimes our small businesses, they're not familiar with the electronic process, or they're not comfortable enough with the electronic process. And so, you know, we've asked, you know, if they're comfortable and familiar enough to where maybe we can defer some of those customers to them, because, you know, we, we, we have one side of the BidSync, but we don't always see what the vendor side is, or what all that the vendors are required to input. So they could help us out, you know, a lot in that area as well, the SBA.
Angela Pierce, Assistant Finance Director. I just wanted to add to the great information that Ms. Charmeline has shared, that we also offer quite a bit of technical assistance, so if there were ever any issues along the way, just to reach out to staff, and we're happy to help ourselves or connect them to, to folks that can help. Thank you, Bo.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us then to item BC for a scheduled presentation.
Randy Marks and Jeff Butler are here for presentation. This is something that came to us from the Arts Commission, recognizing Robbie Kinsel. She passed away recently. Robbie has been such a leader in our organization, in our community, has brought so many concepts. I remember when she was first talking about the 1% for arts, and you look back on what, what happened then, and how much difference that's made in our community, throughout the community. You can see her mark throughout, throughout the community. I'm just so grateful for her leadership and dedication. Our thoughts and prayers are for the family, but I wanted to let Jeff and Randy present this.
Thank you. Yes, well said. We, we miss Robbie, and she had a great impact on the city. She served the city for 24 years, 10 of which were as the Arts and Culture Liaison for the city. Had a great passion for her work, and just accomplished a lot. And we're, we're proud to bring this forward to you today, a resolution approving recommendation from the Arts Commission to honor Robbie Kinsel. And what, what they suggested is that we dedicate the Taking Flight Light as a Feather sculpture, and dedicate that in her honor. And that, as you know, is the, the feather sculpture that will be in the northeast corner of the Upper Scissor Tail Park. And I'll let Randy talk about that a little bit.
Mark, if you would advance a slide there. Thank you so much. So this is the artist's rendering of Taking Flight Light as a Feather, which is destined to be one of the crown jewels in the city's public art collections. And that's why it was felt like that this would, in particular, be appropriate to honor Robbie. The suggestion for honoring Robbie came originally from Arts Commissioner Terry Cooper, who is a longtime Arts Commissioner, and it came up in, as a discussion item in the May Arts Commission meeting, and then it was brought to the June meeting, and of course, passed unanimously. So the sculpture installation will start in September, and will be completed later in the fall. And Mark, if you would advance a slide here, you see a night view of it. Every piece of public art in the collection has an art identification marker provided by the artist, so that people that come and visit the art for the next 10, 20, 50 years can read what the artist had in mind and what they want to say. Now, in addition to the marker that will be designed by Studio KC, KCA, artist team out of Brooklyn, we will coordinate with them so that a different art identification marker honoring Robbie will coordinate with that and will be installed at the site. There may be some other elements to this, we haven't decided yet. I'll be working closely with members of the Arts Commission to determine the content. So with that.
So just wanted to, in closing, so Robbie, as I mentioned, served for 24 years, and this is a quote from Aubrey McDermott, who knew Robbie for a long time, worked together with her for such a long time, and did great work with Robbie. And she said, "Robbie's vision, deep commitment and dedication, eternal optimism, and creative problem-solving tenacity made a myriad of public realm improvements and placemaking initiatives possible across the city." So just wanted to bring this forward to you, and again, it's a resolution honoring Robbie with this dedication, and recommended by the Arts Commission, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
All right, thank you.
Well, yeah, well, not a question, obviously, but just reiterating how much we're going to miss Robbie, and what an amazing legacy she leaves, and I'm so glad that there's an opportunity here to, to reflect that.
May I also just add, well, first is thank you both, but also thank you to Terry Cooper for, you know, rallying the folk on the, on the commission. I think two things really stand out to me. One is, on Sunday, I found myself driving to Target to go run some errands, and then I saw the construction of the new sidewalk connecting the BRT station at Penn to Bell Al Library at Villa. And so I just walked that entire five-minute walk between Penn and Villa, blazing hot, just horrible sweat on my face and in my eyes, stinging, I hated it. But when I got to the Bell Al Library, I saw the Joy Harjo art installation. I hadn't seen it yet. And it was something I worked with Robbie, I worked with Randy, I worked with Terry. We worked together to try and figure out how to honor this place, how to honor the Bell Al Library, our people. And so to see that, just like, after the end of that horrific, five-minute blazing-hot walk was just so cool. The second thing is, even though in the agenda it mentioned that this feather would find a home in Scissor Tail, I think finally seeing the daytime and nighttime image struck me in a way I just couldn't have anticipated, right after Councilor Hammond and I won. And Nice, I remember going to Scissor Tail and talking with Robbie, and our whole conversation was about Renaissance art. And so now, now seeing that piece of earth there in that place is just so cool. It's just so, that's her. That's just her. So just thank you.
And I know I had heard already about the presentation and the dedication, so I was just speaking with Councilwoman Hammond, and I said, I remember when she came to talk about that feather, when she came to our council meeting to present it and, and show it to us, and her excitement about what that would look like in, in this park and in this specific area. So it is truly, truly, truly a loss for us to not have the presence of Ms. Robbie with us. But of course, as we have heard, her dedication and her work has not gone unnoticed, and it will not go unnoticed. And personally, I want to, and I'm sure she's, she's listening as well to what we're saying, but just when I asked her every time, Ms. Robbie, can we? She figured out a way to make it happen. So I am forever grateful for her commitment to the arts, and especially the diversity of ensuring that we had young people engaged, we have all of our city engaged, not just parts of our city. So that's one thing I know, again, will be carried with the legacy that she left. And especially just the few years of knowing her, I understood her love for arts and understood her passion for ensuring that our city had pieces of- and understood her passion for ensuring that our city had pieces of beautiful art and introducing us to artists that we had never heard of. So I think that's also a piece of what we get, the story we get to tell, that we got to meet some artists, Narduli, got to meet that artist because of her in bringing them here to see that beautiful sculpture that now stands in the Oklahoma City Convention Center. So those are things that I know I'll carry and to her family. You know, she will be missed and we appreciate her family for lending her to our city as long as they have. So and my thoughts are definitely with our planning department and Mr. Randy as we go through this process some more to ensure that we're carrying her legacy. And I know you'll do that perfectly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Okay, item B T, Councilwoman Nice.
I was just curious, as we look at the residential resurfacing project, there was a decrease of some funds. So I'm just curious to know what happened, what we're looking at and where we are in this process.
Good morning. Debbie Miller, Assistant Public Works Director. I can answer your questions, Councilwoman. We are doing an amendment and change order to adjust all of the quantities for the asphalt portion of this project. So once they got into the job, they didn't need as much space repair as what they had expected. I will let you know that we are going to be beginning the second phase of this, the concrete work this summer, and it should be complete this fall.
I'm sorry, Amy was telling me something. Did we, are we done there, Councilwoman Nice? Okay. Okay, then item C H, we'll stay with you, Councilwoman Nice.
Okay, I'm not sure if there's anyone to speak to. Oh, there he is. Looks refreshed from Africa. I know, you're probably still on that time. Are you still on that time?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I know we worked through this while you were gone, but if you can help explain it to the council so they understand what's happening.
Okay, so just good morning. Dwight Lawson, Executive Director of the Zoo. This resolution basically cancels the previous agreement that existed among the Zoo Trust, the city and the Oklahoma Zoological Society. That was in place with a three-party agreement because the society formally ran the membership program. So all the money from access to the zoo for memberships ran through the society. We're now cleaning that relationship up, I guess is the best way to say it. That membership piece will move back to the zoo. And so the society will basically contract directly with the Zoo Trust to perform fundraising services to benefit the zoo.
And in that cleanup, it'll help us to see and understand just the fundraising impacts and the numbers of what that looks like as far as membership and fundraising instead of it being in separate entities of what that looks like for the zoo. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, next up would be item C S and we have a scheduled presentation here.
Oh, Dr. Goodlow is here. I'm sorry. I thought Doug was going to present. Dr. Goodlow with the Medical Control Board is here, our Medical Control Director, and appreciate him to present the budget.
Absolutely. Always appreciate the opportunity to highlight the outstanding work being done in our EMS system by the Oklahoma City Fire Department, Emsa, and the many affiliated agencies. As I think most of you know, the importance of the independence of medical oversight in our system. It allows us to more strictly adhere to evidence-based medical practice in the system. And I'm very pleased to report that despite a challenging year to our EMS system with growing volumes and increasing difficulties in recruiting and retaining emergency medical dispatchers, EMTs and paramedics, I am nevertheless very pleased with the sustained and improving quality of our clinical services. We need to look no further than yesterday in our country to understand how important it is to have a healthy, active and immediately capable of responding EMS system, given some of the tragic events around the country. Could any of these occur in Oklahoma City? Absolutely. If citizens worry or wonder, if I think about those kind of events, only every waking hour. I am also immediately encouraged, when I do have those troublesome thoughts, when I think of the high quality of emergency medical dispatchers, EMTs and paramedics in our system, again, throughout the Oklahoma City Fire Department and Emsa. I'm very grateful for the healthy collaborative relationships between the Oklahoma City Fire Department and Emsa. And our medical oversight team, as you would imagine, is intricately involved in those ongoing operational discussions on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. Very pleased to be able to bring to you a budget this year that actually trims our cost a little bit and still allows us to be a bit more robust than we have been in times past in terms of some of the data analysis. We're always seeking the very best statistically possible answers to the care that we are able to provide. Happy to answer any specific questions that you have about our specific budget. Happy to report that our Medical Control Board slate of physicians representing the busiest emergency departments here in Oklahoma City and Tulsa, that has remained intact. We've not had any turnover on that group this year. And also our medical oversight team has continued to remain intact, representing literally over 100 years of experience in EMS. Fortunately, not the same year repeated 100 times, but always getting smarter as time goes on.
We really appreciate the partnership too that Dr. Goodlow and his team bring, that they're always looking at medical services and our responses and how we can be better. And even through the challenge that we've had with staffing and response times, looking at creative ways that we can try to work through getting our services, strengthening our services and the quality of care. And so really appreciate that because as he said, they provide this for Emsa as well as for the Fire Department and our paramedics that we have in the Fire Department. So really appreciate the partnership and the work that you all do.
Yeah, and I would just quickly add, because I know we've had this item before you not that many months ago, just a quick note about early success that we are finding with dual EMT-staffed ambulances, our 911 BLS ambulance program here in metro Oklahoma City and metro Tulsa as well. I'll be happy to come back and present, you know, in far more detail the clinical accuracy and safety of that program. But I would be remiss without sharing some good news about that today. It is absolutely tracking every bit as well as we had hoped when we launched that just over six months ago.
All right, thank you. Our next scheduled presentation covers items C W through D A.
So Doug Dowler is going to give us a presentation on these items. These items are something that we had missed in the first contracts we did for ARPA. This doesn't change the contracts at all, but I'll let Doug walk through the change that we're making.
Good morning. Doug Dowler, Assistant Finance Director here. These five items are the five contracts that we've let through our ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act grant. And in each of these, the items laid out basically the reason why these would be sole source contracts with these individuals, but we never actually took the step of waiving our selection guidelines and declaring it as sole source purchase. So this was a miss just in terms of more of an administrative process to making sure we follow all of our processes. So for each of these contracts, you'll see here that we're waiving our selection guidelines, basically declaring these as sole source vendors to provide this service to us. And this way, we ensure that we're following all of our purchasing guidelines with these contracts. And so with the one that's not on here is ASM. And that one was just passed a few meetings ago. That one did include the waiver in that. So we were in the process of cleaning this up with that one. But these are the remaining five contracts under ARPA. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Yeah, so when I said it doesn't change the contracts, it amends the contracts to include this language. It doesn't change the funding or the services in the contracts. Thank you, Doug.
All right, Councilwoman Nice, item D B, you wanted to speak to?
Yes, I actually wanted to go back to C T because C T is in relation to D B.
Okay.
And I want us to look at, one, the, I would like the budget to be more explained as far as this Economic Development Trust budget in relation to also with C D for that annual management fee as I'm trying to look to see exactly which area that is coming from.
Joanna McSpatten, Finance Department. The Alliance contract and all of our other service contracts are going to be included in the trust budget under general economic development. I'm not sure if you have the printed version of the budget, which page that would be, but it's going to be, it's the last page.
Yes, the last page.
Yeah, it's the last page of the printed budget. And so it's going to, they're going to be mostly in that payment from general fund line. But I have all of, so we have the Alliance, the Chamber is in there. We have the Myriad Gardens and Scissor Tail Service contracts and a few other things. I'm sorry, on the expense side, it would be the other services and charges line.
I guess that's where my concern is. One, as I'm looking at that page, I don't see the Alliance named on this page. Two, as I look, I don't see any itemized areas pertaining to that because of the, what I'm looking at for item D B, that says base services TIF and GOLT and base services MAPS 4, where exactly that is located also on this page.
Yeah, so the TIF and GOLT components will be included in each of the TIF budgets. So we have a portion that is paid out of TIF 2, TIF 8, TIF 4 and 5, and I believe TIF 13. I'd have to go get the detail on that allocation. And then GOLT pays a portion as well. So that would be listed in the GOLT budget page. I do not have them itemized out on the budget by contract or vendor, but I could certainly get that for you.
I would like to have that. As I'm looking at the source of funds, it says not to exceed, but it doesn't say how much from each TIF.
On the Alliance contract, you mean?
Correct. And also on MAPS 4, it says not to exceed. But those, that was just one MAPS 4 for the use tax and general fund. But as far as the TIF fund and it looks like GOLT is included in that, it is not specific to how much money it is.
Sure, I can get you that.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I believe that concludes everything that we had pulled out for separate discussion. We could adopt the consent docket now if that's the council's desire. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 10 is the concurrence docket. We have items A through Q we could take with one motion. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11 is items requiring separate votes. We have item 11A. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at 11301 North County Line Road going from AA to R1. Councilman Carter. And no one has signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. How we recommended unanimously for approval, so I do too.
Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11B is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at 1010 North Oklahoma Avenue and nearby addresses going from R4, C301 downtown scenic highway area to DBD, DTD1 and downtown scenic highway area. This was deferred from June 21st. No one has signed up to speak. Councilmembers Hammond and Nice are both a part of this.
We're motion for approval.
A motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes six to one. Item 11C is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at 11505 South Carroll Road going from AA to RA 2. Councilman Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. Has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
They have not.
It was recommended unanimously for approval from the Planning Commission. So I'll go ahead and move it for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11D is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at 300 Northeast 70th going from R1 to I1. No one has signed up to speak. Councilwoman Nice.
Yes, now the applicant is present. If you'd just come, let me know what we're doing here, that'd be great. I understand light industrial, but is there an idea of what we're actually going to do with this light industrial?
Good afternoon. Mark Zitschel with Johnson and Associates on behalf of the applicant. There's not a firm project yet, but the idea is a continuation of the same sort of smaller scale industrial to the west. And I will note one thing I noticed while it was just up on the screen. The legal description is actually what you see now. So it does not include any of the land south of that creek. And so I can make sure to work with staff so that when it's updated in the GIS, none of the area to the south is rezoned.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right, with that, I'll go ahead and move for approval.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11E is two items that are related to each other. And one is the amendment to the master design statement reducing the area of PUD 1882. And two is the ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 15027 North MacArthur Boulevard, taking that property from R201 and C3 to PUD 1882. This item was deferred a couple of times. I don't know if Councilman Stone Cypher approached someone. It looks like he approached Councilman Stone about handling this item. Go ahead.
He did. Did anyone sign up to speak on this item?
They did not.
Thank you. Yeah, I talked to Councilman Stone Cypher on this and he would like to see it moved for approval. So on item one there, 11E1, I'll go ahead and make the motion on that.
Okay. So first up, we'll handle item 11E1. This is the amendment to the master design statement. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I'll go ahead and make the motion on item E2.
Okay, we've got a motion on item 11E2, the ordinance. Got a second and cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11F is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at 16450 Northwestern Avenue going from PUD 1289 to PUD 1890. Councilwoman Nice, no one has signed up to speak.
Okay, and this is to permit a drive-through restaurant. And I understand there were no protesters present, so I will move for approval.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item 11G is an ordinance on final hearing recommended for approval at 14602 Parkway Center Avenue going from PUD 702 to PUD 1892. Councilman Stone, did Councilman Stone Cypher approach you as well on this item?
He did.
Okay.
It was recommended by the Planning Commission and Councilman Stone Cypher wanted to see the motion approved, so I'll go ahead and make the motion now.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11H is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval at 1612 and 1614 Northwest 17th, going from SPOD 930, R2 and Gatewood Urban Conservation District to SPOD 1386 and Gatewood Urban Conservation District. This item was deferred from June 21st. No one has signed up to speak. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hammond.
Yes, can we have the applicant come up and just describe this project and kind of the process that we've, I know there's a handful of TEs, so just wanted to get a sort of idea of how that process went and what they are.
Yes. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, on behalf of the applicant. So this is an SPOD that is a, basically a half block north of the Plaza District. This would allow for 16 one-bedroom apartments to be built in an area that is, has seen a lot of growth over the last probably 10 years. We went through many iterations of the design at the Planning Commission phase. At the time, Asa Highsmith was the Planning Commission member, and as most of you know, Asa is an architect. And so we redesigned this site, I'm going to say, four or five times, and only moved forward with Planning Commission once he was convinced that the design was compatible with the neighborhood. What that really meant was, from a design standpoint, we pushed all the parking to the back. This site is served by a back alley, so it serves as a nice benefit to this, to be able to be, bring those cars off the alley and allow 17th Street to not be cluttered with parking on the front. So the TEs that you see, these were all TEs suggested by staff and/or Planning Commission, all of which we agreed to or had slight modifications to. The document has been amended with those. There were two additional changes that were made. One was a clerical error or typo that needed to be fixed, that being to change the height to 35 feet. But it's limited that the three-story structures are on the west, and the two-story structure is on the east. And then one of the concerns raised by the neighbors was the potential that these 16 units could be short-term rental or Airbnb. So we've modified the document to prohibit lodging accommodations, home sharing shall be specifically excluded from this SPOD. That was changed on June 28th. So all that said, we think it's a project that's compatible with the area and will allow for some additional housing options in the Plaza area.
Thank you. Yeah, so I have spoken, I know there was some protests with this when it came to Planning Commission. I have spoken with those protesters, and I do think, and I appreciate you all for working with them and trying to address some of those concerns that they had and making sure that it is a compatible and something that really benefits the neighborhood. So really appreciate that. There, we do need to, I need a motion to submit the new master design statement from June 28th. Did you send that to Legal already?
I've sent it to Development Services.
Development Services, okay.
It's the June 28th, which has the two changes, the only two changes that I mentioned.
Okay, so I will motion to submit that? Is that right?
So we can, we can do that, even though it's not listed on the agenda? Kenny?
Yes.
Amendment to the master design statement.
Amendment to the master design.
Statement at the front.
Okay.
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 So I will make that motion.
All right, so we've got a motion on an amendment to the master design statement as filed.
June 28, '22.
It was filed June 28th of this year. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously.
And then I will move to approve the amended.
The ordinance?
Ace. Yes. Words.
All right, this is a motion to approve item 11H. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Passes unanimously. Okay, 11I is an ordinance on final hearing that was recommended for approval at 814 North Douglas going from R3 to SPOD 1403. Councilwoman Hammond, no one has signed up to speak.
Um, yes, I, I have not really had time to look through this as much as I would like, so I would actually like to ask for a deferral to our next meeting so I can connect with the applicant.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for a deferral of this item to the next meeting in two weeks. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Item is deferred. 11J is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval to close, vacate, discontinue, and foreclose the right to reopen certain public streets and rights of way and an easement that are east of North Lincoln Boulevard and north of Northeast 6th at 601 Northeast 6th. And Councilwoman Nice, Jacob Fanning has signed up to speak on behalf of the applicant, or I should say, is available for questions.
Okay, there's really no questions. This is really just a cleanup as far as the property is for the easement, so.
Correct.
Yeah, I'll just ask for approval and very happy, unfortunately, that we had to move from Ward Two to Ward Seven, but I'm excited about the Oklahoma City Center for Nonprofits in Ward Seven.
That's okay.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Thank you. 11K is an ordinance on final hearing. It was recommended for approval to close 10-foot-wide utility easement between lots 20 and 21 in Block One of Kingsbridge Estates. And I don't know if Councilwoman Young, you want to handle it? Councilman Carter?
Has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
And we have no protests and...
It would appear.
Okay, so, yeah, we move for approval.
Got a motion and a second. Passes unanimously. Okay, item 11L was previously deferred to our next meeting, which brings us to 11M. In M1 is a public hearing regarding the dilapidated structures here listed. As, we do have one person who has signed up to speak under this public hearing, Michael Washington?
Michael Washington. 2900 Northeast 18th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Can I please look at this property so I can see exactly what I'm talking about? Take these shades off, because it's a bit dim. Um, let's see, hmm, wait a minute. Oh, yeah, the, you know, 119, 1119 Northeast 18th Street, that's in Ward Seven. I don't understand what we're just talking about, is the leaves of grass too high or something, hedges? Hmm, okay. Now, let me say this here, I got, just very briefly. It appears to me that when these people don't come in and correct the problems that you say needed to be done with their properties, there's a lien placed on it, you come out, fix it up, or whatever the case may be. And then what happens after that? And then, I mean, in other words, if the liens are satisfied, do the people still get the property? Do y'all sell the property to get your money out of it? How does that work? That's what I'm trying to figure.
Chad Davidson, Code Enforcement Superintendent. City actually never takes control of any property that they, they declare unsecured or dilapidated. In this instance, this is a home that burnt.
Oh.
As you can tell, some pretty substantial damage to it. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to get that, that property owner to come to us with a plan of action to fix the property.
I see you.
In this instance, I believe we've talked with the owner. They have provided us with an acceptable plan of action. We anticipate them fixing their home.
Okay, well, how long have you given them to do that?
Well, you know, the plan of action, I think typically, we're somewhere around six or eight months whenever they do these. It could be a little more, could be a little less, just depending on circumstances. I know in the past, we have had material shortages and things of that nature. We always want to work with that property owner.
So the whole concern is that that be corrected, that mess there? I mean, that's definitely what it is. So in other words, in no time, then are you planning on taking this property and reestablishing it to where it becomes city property then?
What we've asked the owner to do is repair or remove the structure.
That's what I'm saying, and if they don't, you're going to do it.
If they do not, then the city could.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
Remove the structure.
Okay, well, you're okay.
And then they could place a lien on the property.
Yeah.
For providing that service.
Now then, if it don't pay the lien, then the property basically becomes yours, because you're going to.
Does not become the city's.
So you just don't get paid at all?
It would be the county's.
I mean, the county.
The county would sell it in option typically.
So it'd be the county selling it. That's what we need everybody to hear, that the county will in fact take over.
They could.
And then y'all lien with, get your money from what we sell to. Now, I ain't talking, that's what the people need to hear. Thank you. Okay, now then.
Mr. Washington, we're basically at the end of your three minutes.
Okay, now, that's that. No, no, I'm satisfied with that now. Thank you so much, David. Okay, now, let me look at this other one then. Now, let's see. 8125 Northwest 26th Street. So now, there's a conspiratory plot with the county who I have a great disregard for. Interesting, isn't it? Now then, what's up with this one?
Again, this property had a fire on that detached shed.
All right, Mr. Washington, we're past time now, so thank you.
I just, I don't know, I'm trying to figure out what's, the same thing with this, if the county get a hold to a sale, you get your money if you put a lien on to turn it down?
Yes.
Thank y'all, and I'll be back, because I've got some more to talk to about.
No one else has signed up to speak under this public hearing, so we can advance to item M2, the resolution declaring that the structures are dilapidated. Got a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11N1 is the public hearing regarding the dilapidated structure listed here in the Capital Medical Zone at 1500 North Styles. One person has signed up to speak under this public hearing, Michael Washington.
Yeah, I'll be back. We need the public to start hearing what's going on around here. All this hide and clandestine behavior is going to end today. Now then, I'm a spokesman for the people, and we're going to make it happen. Now, let's see here. MN, can I see those properties? Okay, now, which one is this one? This is what?
There's only one.
Let me get back where I was, I didn't know I was going to speak that quickly. Okay. 1500 North Styles. Now, what are we doing with this one, sir? I mean.
Again, a pretty substantial fire at this property. And again, we've had contact with the owner of the property, and, and they're going to provide us with a plan of action as well.
Okay, so are they talking about planning, selling it, anything like that? I mean, I'd like to buy it.
She didn't say about, anything about selling the property, no.
Okay, well, I'll check with them on that. Thank you. Same thing, though, if they don't come into compliance, code of conduct for buildings, then it will be sold probably if y'all come in and fix it up, and then after it's torn down.
No, sir, the city will not be fixing it.
Oh.
The city has asked them to repair or remove the structure. If they do not, the city can remove it.
Right, and so then the city can remove the property, place a lien on it, and then in fact, make sure everybody understands this, then it may go up to a county auction.
It could.
And then from there, you'll get your money from what the county sells it from.
That's correct.
That's all we need to know. Thank you so much. Maybe go to the next one, please.
It's the only one.
You know, I just want to.
Only one?
That's the only one, but I just want to add to that as far as, as we're looking at this one, it's specific because of it being located in the Capital Medical Zone District, so it has layers as to how we have to operate in the Capital Medical zoning district where this is located, and why we were asking for our legislative session, this past session, for it to be sunset. So those layers that we, that are so complicated, we would not have to go through for properties that are a safety hazard and could be for our residents in the city.
Okay, well, that sounds interesting. I'll definitely look forward to that. Thank you.
All right, that's the only person signed up to speak under that public hearing, so we can advance to the resolution at file, found at N2, declaring the structure to be dilapidated. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 1101 is the public hearing regarding the unsecured structures here listed, except for those struck at the beginning of the meeting. One person has signed up to speak under this public hearing, and that is Michael Washington.
Yes, yes, yes. I have to protect the interests of those who are otherwise voiceless and who don't have a real understanding as to the clandestine plot to take from them lands and properties that belong to them. That's the reason for me standing here. Again, we're not going to accept this any longer without some, some of you being able to, being held accountable for taking these people's money and doing what you want with it, properties. Okay, now then, which one are we looking at there? Which one is that? Five? Let me see. I just want to go to one, 15001 North Kelly. Let's look at that one. Is that the one, is that it? Okay. Okay, okay. Now, sir, what about this one? Do y'all have plans to demolish that yourself? Have you talked to the folks? How long have you given them?
We don't, currently, that's not what this is on this docket for. It's for an unsecured building. We like to have them secured as soon as possible. That way, no one gets inside of them. They tend to burn more frequently whenever they're unsecured, so.
But now.
This is a property that we've had, oh, we've secured it several times, and had to mow it over the years and what have you.
And may I add, this belongs to Realty Income out of San Diego, California.
Realty?
So therefore, they aren't even paying attention to their property in California.
All right, I'll see, I definitely may want to get with them and see if they want to just sell it to me. I'm telling you, y'all can help me get some money for it, can't you? All right, now, so if they don't, regardless, man, I don't care who owns what, they don't act right, you come in, you fix it up, you mow it down or whatever, then the properties can be set into auction, can be, and then you'll get your money from the lien by turning it down or whatever.
In this instance, we would secure the property from any openings, and then if, if they do not remit payment to the city, then we would, we could file a lien, yes.
That's what I'm trying to, okay, thank you, sir. Let's go to, I don't want to hold y'all much longer. 1617 Northeast 10th Street. Is that the jungle? What in the world is that?
And I'll add that the property owner address is off of 140th and Western, so not at this address.
Okay. Okay, I can see it definitely needs, let me tell you, sir, I'm getting ready to close out here. People have a right to live in a comfortable, safe, and wholesome environment, so I'm not saying this is wrong. I'm just making sure that the people are given the opportunity to make corrections, and listen carefully if y'all under my voices out there watching. If they don't act right, you have a right to get your monies, because they do not have a right to disregard the other residents, and maybe they're close. So thank you for that. Having said that, I believe that's the last one. Let me see here, it is. Thank y'all so much for your time and patience.
No one else has signed up to speak under this public hearing, so we can advance to the resolution found at item 1102, declaring that structures are unsecured. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. 11P1 is the public hearing regarding the abandoned buildings here listed, except for those struck at the beginning of the meeting. Amy, has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
So we'll close the public hearing and go to 11P2, the resolution declaring that the buildings are abandoned. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. Now we're at 11Q1, which is a public hearing regarding 11Q2, which is a resolution approving the fiscal year 2022-23 Third Action Year Plan, approving new formula grant funding allocations for the agencies listed here. Why don't we do the presentation, then we'll back it up to the public hearing, because there is a presentation.
Chris, are you doing the presentation? Chris Varga with the Planning Department will give us a quick presentation on these projects, the funding on these projects.
Good morning. Chris Varga, Planning Department, Housing and Community Development Division. This is our annual action plan that serves as the city's submittal to HUD for the use of our entitlement grant funds that Oklahoma City receives. This covers the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnerships Program that we call HOME, that deals deals with affordable housing, the Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, that deals with homeless prevention and assistance, and Hopewa Housing Opportunity for Persons with AIDS, that deals with families and persons with AIDS, giving them housing assistance and other types of financial support. This year, the numbers, we actually got a little more in most categories from HUD, from congressional allocations for Oklahoma City. This year, CDBG was the only one we've lost a little bit of money, at four-point-nine million. HOME, we got about two-point-six million, ESG, four-hundred-thirty thousand, and Hopewa, one-point-two million approximately. The grant dollars for all of these programs are related to programs and services to assist residents in our community that are of low and moderate incomes, as defined by HUD programs. Our action plan submittal describes the general budgets and allocations for CDBG and HOME. Budget details for specific projects for ESG and Hopewa are not included, as they're recommended by the Continuum of Care Board and brought to you by later individual actions before the council. CDBG funds a number of programs, city programs, including housing rehab, our strong neighborhood initiatives, our program for boarding and securing abandoned buildings, COTP gets some money to provide free and reduced bus rides for our seniors and persons with disabilities. Additional CDBG subrecipients include Community Health Services, who provides homeless health care for the persons who are homeless, court-appointed special advocates of Oklahoma County that provide services for children in foster care, OKURA, the Housing Authority, Metro Fair Housing, which does our fair housing commitments to HUD, our complaints, our testing, and our training requirements, our Community Action Agency that does our emergency home repair and small business programs, and Oklahoma Housing Services in Jefferson Park Neighborhoods, the joint venture of those two Chodos who are doing that new walnut project on Twenty-third and Melonlet. And a new subrecipient recommended this year is SISU Youth Services, and SISU helps to, they currently have a youth shelter in our city, and they have acquired a new building at twenty-one-twenty-nine Northwest Thirtieth that they are rehabbing for needs and increasing their bed count a bit, and they are also serve youth fifteen to twenty-four who are experiencing homelessness. There's a recommended one-million-dollar allocation in support of that project. For our HOME budget, HOME can be used for down payment assistance program, for our internal whole house rehabilitation projects, our Chodos, our community housing development organizations who are nonprofit housing providers. Fifteen percent of HOME has to be set aside and spent for Chodo support. And that about summarizes the HUD point. I'd be willing to accept any questions you have on the item.
I would like for you to explain a little further as far as the relationship with the Urban Renewal Authority and the things that they are doing. I'm looking at elimination of slum and blight as far as CDBG, OKURA, Urban Renewal Completions, two units, so I'm curious as to what we're looking at with that in comparison to one hundred and fifty units for abandoned housing with code enforcement, which is something that we actually just kinda went over as we were looking at those abandoned houses and declaring those structures
Yes, the code enforcement is actually what we, what we just discussed, and on those particular projects, when the liens are paid off, that money comes back to block grant as program income. In terms of our relationship with OKURA, there is a long and longstanding relationship with Oklahoma Urban Renewal Authority that relates to when the Community Development Block Grant was first established in statute. The Urban Renewal Program that was federally funded at that time was folded into Community Development Block Grant, with an understanding that there would be continued report, support for urban renewal projects until the closeout of all those areas. There are a couple of still federal closeout areas that OKURA manages in Ward Seven, and we principally pay them funds for their staffing. They try and dispose of some of those properties. They have to maintain those properties. They have to mow them. They have to do debris removal, et cetera. So most of that money that they get has been in allocation they've got many years to provide that type of support. Also, if they're getting ready to sell a property, they might need legal costs. Those can all be attributed to that fund, and those are slum and blight activities. CDBG can only pay for up to thirty percent of our money can be for slum and blight, so that's a category that falls in. We also give OKURA some other project funds sometimes for specific projects. For instance, they're planning a sewer installation in the Miramar subdivision, where they own a lot of properties, and there's currently unseptics in that area. So it's virtually impossible to build a new house on those lots because of the cost to hook up to sewer.
And I know that was one of the concerns, even as far as looking at Urban Renewal Authority properties, so I'm wondering how this fund would be in relation to that, as we look at lots that are owned by OKURA, that the public or community would like to acquire and build, they're unable to do because of those connection as far as infrastructure. So, and not specifically to Miramar, but in other places that have not been able to be developed because of that, and that, that price goes to the builder, or the developer, or the one who's trying to acquire the property
Right.
instead of it going to OKURA to, for us to help and assist in these properties to be developed by a community. So I would like for us to look at, at how that can be assessed and possibly added in this, and I've already talked to, to Urban Renewal and Alliance about this many times, and I'm actually quite tired of talking about it, because these are issues that, again, prohibit community from being able to be a part of the community, which is a concern for me. When I have people say they wanna come back to the community, and they're told they can't, or the price is, is so enormous that it's not even worth that for them to be able to do such. So as I'm, as we're looking at that, there was also something else I was looking at here, and I, because we were talking about that, I lost my train of thought. But with, with looking at these urban renewal properties, oh, the grass, but that's another conversation for urban renewal. So if we're paying for, for grass or helping for grass to be mowed, then it only makes sense that we do it fully and not half. So I know that's nothing you can take care of, but I'll take care of that
Okay.
in that conversation. But either way, as I was talking about, as we're looking at Urban Renewal Authority properties and lots in relation to what we do as far as these funds, that is something that I would like for us to, to explore and look further in depth into, how we can accommodate for those particular areas that they also have in their inventory. Thank you.
May I? This builds on my earlier concerns about the impact fees and just that kinda conversation about currently being kind of an easier task to go develop along the peripheral parts of the city. It's my understanding, the general fund, we can't use the, the funds for like a gift, so like, in this instance, we couldn't use the general fund to do, to help residents with like a down payment assistance program? Is that right? What would, what, how can we go about learning what other cities are doing to maybe further maximize the HUD funds that are coming through to organizations like Jefferson Park, et cetera? Because I think while it, I think it's a little bit of column A and a little bit of column B. I think it's gonna require probably incentivizing conscientious developers to do the infills and the rehabs in the urban core, similar to what you saw with like ASOS Project. Like, you want stuff like, you want projects like that in the urban core. But I think you'll miss it if you don't do column B also, where we figure out how to connect residents to down payment assistance programs, moving them from renters into homeownerships. It's kind of like a one-two there. So I'd like to learn more, since we're restricted with the general fund, I'd like to figure out how we can maximize the work you all are already doing, particularly heading into MAPS four and whatever subsequent bond builds more housing for our people. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Uh huh.
I don't have that answer. I just know it's the need.
And there are some programs that provide additional assistance in housing, but we can look at that and get information for you.
We do have a couple of people who signed up to speak under the public hearing on this item at Q one. First is Rachel Bradley. Rachel, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address, and keep your remarks to three minutes or less.
Absolutely. Hi, my name is Rachel Bradley. I am the Executive Director at SISU Youth Services. Our address is thirty-one thirty-one North Pennsylvania Avenue here in Oklahoma City. We are a low-barrier, identity-affirming, safe space for young people in Oklahoma City that are unhoused to find the shelter and support they need to pursue the life they want. We offer emergency shelter, an emergency shelter overnight. We also offer some drop-in services, case management, and then some new transitional housing services for young people between the ages of fifteen to twenty-four. I wanna thank you so much for considering this, and we are one of the, one of the groups that will benefit from the Community Development Block Grant Funds, and that will renovate a new drop-in center, an emergency shelter for youth that are experiencing homelessness in Oklahoma City. The most recent point in time count here did point out that nearly thirty-five percent of the people that were counted in our homelessness point in time count were below the age, or did increase, I guess, from, from last year that were below the age of twenty-four. So that is a growing population and one that we really need to address here in Oklahoma City. Your actions today alongside some of our other funding partners are very important and could help reverse this trend and intervene in the cycles of homelessness for our city's most vulnerable young residents. We'd like to thank all of our funding partners for help with this project, including the city, but that's Arnault Family Foundation, the Sarkis Foundation, and Asmuch Foundation, and the Cresset Family Foundation. These organizations and our planning committee have put great trust in SISU, and we're very proud and appreciative of that. I encourage everyone to learn more about our organization and the services that we're providing at sisuyouth.org, or feel free to reach out, and we're happy to schedule a tour of both our current home and this new development. And we believe that youth are the heroes of their own stories, but today you can be the hero of SISU's story. We just really wanna thank you for that and look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Michael Washington?
Hallelujah! Twenty-nine-hundred North East Eighteenth Street with a one-one-one-one. One. Well, now, come on, has he left? Has he gone? Somewhere around these things. Man, who in the hell do you people think y'all are around these parts? That's right, you know I'm not gonna be nice. Really? What in the hell you mean that you gonna give OKURA? Huh? Oklahoma County Urban Renewal Development Authority, listen to that. These people already got enough damn money. They don't need those help from y'all with this crazy thirty-action-year-plan crap. So y'all just gonna help them become involved in home investments, and home improvements, home property improvements, and disregard little old me, underdog. Really? Isn't that interesting? Now then, this ain't gonna work. As a matter of fact, I'm subtly interested in this area of something I hadn't even thought about before now, because you coming in, all this invading upon my African-American community to further help these investment brokers come in and secure properties that they already have money for anyway, to give them excess funds that could go to my organizations, Oklahoma Coalition Against People Abuse, Empower People Incorporated. Yes, that's right. It's not gonna work, okay? Bottom line, quote-quote, unquote, fuck. Now, this investment is extremely disturbing to me. I'm not gonna allow you to come over and give monies to these so-called wealthy, no-good suckers
Thirty seconds, please.
who don't deserve an opportunity to come in and move me out, so they can move in and embrace the businesses where I used to live at. It's not gonna happen. Now then, as a matter of fact, my coalition, Oklahoma Coalition Against People Abuse and Empower People Incorporated, needs some of this money that I didn't know existed, but now that I do, I'm gonna have a wonderful day, 'cause I will be back.
All right, that concludes those who've signed up to speak under the public hearing at Q one, and we heard about the resolution itself at Q two. If there are no other comments or questions, the council could adopt the resolution.
Mayor?
Uh huh.
Just real quick, I just wanna say thanks to SISU for being here, because normally what, what they're doing is they're back at their shelter with our kids, the most vulnerable kids, black, white, Hispanic, Native American, you name it. They are there with those kids who have come from lots of trauma and don't have a lot of trust in people, and SISU helps build that trust. And I just think it's important to say after the comments we just heard, to remind people that everyday Oklahoma Cityans are on a day-in, day-out basis, doing everything they can to work with our kids to rebuild trust and to keep them out of this state's number-one in incarceration rates. So that's the reality of what SISU and a lot of these homeless service providers are doing, and quite frankly, I don't know how they do it. So my hat's off to them, so that's why this is important. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you. All right, looks like we have a motion and a second on this item. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item eleven R was previously deferred, which brings us to item eleven S. This is a resolution approving the incurrence of indebtedness by the Oklahoma City Water Utilities Trust. I believe this item was presented at the last meeting, but candidly, you just didn't have enough people here.
For the emergency, that's right.
For the, for the waiver of competitive bidding. So today, it's simply a vote if the council would wish to proceed. So motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously, and with the affirmative votes required to incur indebtedness, as well as the affirmative votes required to waive competitive bidding. All right, item T one is a resolution approving the request for salary continuation for Lieutenant Scott Landis. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item U is a claim recommended for denial. Executive session is not requested. Motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Eleven V is V one, our claims recommended for approval, items A through C. Executive session is not requested. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item twelve is comments from council. We'll just go around the horn. Word one?
Nothing today, sir.
Okay, word two?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks again to SISU. They make fun of me for mispronouncing their name, SISU, and I, my mom's from Texarkana, so I end up saying SISU a lot. But I just wanna say thanks again to them, particularly for allowing me to ride my bike with them in the downtown Pride Parade, and it was really helpful. I rode the bike in the Thirty-Ninth Street Parade alongside SISU as well, and during that parade, I got to talk to those students, those kids. I got to talk to those students, those kids, about their needs, and then I got to see them again at the downtown parade, and it's just really, it's really neat to see those services there. It was also incredible to see city employees in that parade. I believe the mayor was there. Got to see fellow council member Nice was there. I know Jo Beth, Councilwoman, you would've been there, but unfortunately, you weren't feeling, you're feeling a little under the weather, so we're glad to have you back. In fact, welcome back. And then, I just also wanted to say thank you to Public Works, Planning, Embark, the BRT stakeholder group for working with me to get us, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, a sidewalk that will connect the upcoming BRT station at Penn Square Mall with a five-minute walk to Belle Isle Library, and that is a sidewalk along the north side of Northwest Expressway. And I'm honestly, it's one of the most exciting things I've ever got to be a part of, so I really appreciate Embark and everyone I just mentioned for helping make that sidewalk a reality there, so we can connect families and just residents generally to, from that BRT to the library. Also, congratulations to Embark and the city for the recent groundbreaking for the BRT there where Ward 6 meets Ward 2 at 23rd and Claussen. I thought that was a really cool moment, and yeah, that's, that's my comments for now. Thank you.
All right, word four? Word six? Word seven? Okay. That concludes comments from council. Item 8 is citizens to be heard, and we have a few who have signed up to speak. We'll begin with Ronnie Kirk. I'm sorry, Ronnie? Ronnie Kirk?
My name is Ronnie Kirk, Ward 7, 2328 North Azur. Two weeks ago, I came to have a city council meeting, and I said, I spoke on Juneteenth. Let me get these. I've already paid a public apology, made a public apology to Pastor Scobie and every Baptist church members. Years ago, you know, I looked up my criminal history, I looked up my library history. Years ago, I was put on Oklahoma's watch list. Once I found out what that meant, I went to Kansas City, laid brick, built 22 units, and learned how to acid wash buildings. You know, I gave you the things with my grandkids. Some of them are working the restaurants now, they do music. I taught them all to earn money legally. You know, I was young and dumb and fast as a young man. I tried everything, but after I found out certain things, the easiest way for me to make my money was to do it legally. You know, Chantigny reported Juneteenth started 20 years ago. It was on television. Actually, it was started 32 years ago, 'cause I started it here in Oklahoma. I went to Dallas in 1989 for a Juneteenth party. I had no idea what Juneteenth was about. Then in 1990, I got my city permits from here in the city, from year to year to year, and I still got every last one of them. Ms. Alexander was 104 years old. That picture you see of her, she's holding my city permits. So thank you, that's why I wanted to come. I wanted to kind of set, get that straight. I started Juneteenth in 1990, made 11,240 kids. I stopped counting kids four years ago. Stopped counting them, but I still feel-
Your time's almost up.
Thank you, young lady. Thank you. Y'all have a good day.
Thank you, you too. Diane McDaniel?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Diane McDaniel, address 617 North Everest Avenue, Oklahoma City, Ward Counsel 7. Councilwoman Nikki Nice is my council, and I'm speaking on the stop sign that's located on 6 and Stonewall. I did an inventory, there are 700 residents that live in the 7 and at the Douglas. I told you last time I was here that I almost had a wreck, because there were no stop signs. At 100% of the residents, I mean, who actually own homes, they concur with me that the stop four-way stop sign is absolutely necessary for the safety of all residents. They just think if 700 people are in the Douglas and in the 7s, if they just had one visitor themselves, that causes additional traffic. So I'm pleading to the council, and I thank you for your patience, you did have patience, thank you, that you all would consider keeping the four-way stop, because it's going to help traffic. We have an influx of businesses in that area, and so I'm pleading that you mayor, and my councilwoman, and the rest of you will keep that, because 100% of the residents want that stop sign, and they concur with my statement. Do you all have questions?
No, but I'll just clarify for the council. Your comments relate to the R1, which is deferred, but, but if you're not here next time, we'll remember that-
Yes, it was deferred until this time. I counsel a doctor's appointment to be here this time, and it was deferred the first time I was here. So I'm back. If you're gonna defer it again, give me a date and a time, and I will be back, the Lord's willing.
If you don't mind, I know a few of you are here. After the meeting, we'll, we'll sit and we'll have time to discuss, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gina Shofala?
Good morning. Thanks for hearing me today. My name is Gina Shofala. I am the Developers and Owners Rep for the Page Woodson Development. I reside actually on the east side in Lincoln Terrace, but I am here primarily to speak on behalf of that same issue that Mrs. Diane just spoke on. I, as the Developers Rep with Page Woodson, have been working in the area for just about 10 years now. I've been working with this community, however, for almost 19 years as it related to the redevelopment of the historic Page Woodson School. I want, as, as it relates to this stop sign and this four-way stop, I submitted a letter to the council as part of a package that I think Ms. Denaveta Davis submitted to you. I want to say that, one, this neighborhood association is one of the most organized, efficient, and effective neighborhood associations that I have ever been involved with. I've sat on the Board of Neighborhood Alliance, and so I understand the importance of grassroots organization, the importance of that, and its effectiveness in getting things done and moving through your systems. This stop sign is strictly an issue of safety. The development has and will, at its conclusion, add an additional 500 or more residences to this neighborhood. That in and of itself increases traffic. In an effort to work with city policies and desires, we are also facilitating the addition of new and much-needed businesses. That, too, will generate additional traffic. We have had several neighbors reach out to us in the past regarding the high speed of traffic that comes down Stonewall. Stonewall used to be closed off at 4th Street. It did not extend to 4th Street.
30 seconds, please.
The city extended the street, and therefore, the through traffic from the Health Science Center made that traffic extremely fast. The stop signs are necessary for safety, to allow people, pedestrian traffic, as well as just people coming out of the neighborhoods, to keep from having an accident. It's really that simple. Does not really need a lot of deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Jones?
Greg Jones, 612 North Kate Avenue. I'm a resident of the JFK neighborhood, speaking on the same issue. Been there for about 15 years. It's the community which I work, live, and play. Shortly after joining the neighborhood association, or during living there, I joined the neighborhood association, and I look back, oftentimes I'm reminded about what our association's purpose is. It's to promote a better community for residents, to improve and beautify our neighborhood. It's to educate our members about and prevent crime and vandalism, promote a sense of community and self-determination amongst the residents, and really to promote a common neighborhood with some of our common interests. Our current president, Ms. Denaveta Davis, has facilitated monthly meetings to, she sends frequent emails to communicate what's happening in our community. She tries to keep us informed on the process and always leaves that decision up to the neighborhood residents to decide what the next steps are. As we're speaking about this stop sign issue, I'm a frequent patron of Culture Coffee, which sits right across the street, and also Bistro 46. So if you haven't tried the, the coffee, the latte, or the London Fog, I'd encourage you to do that. Sunday's a great soul food lunch, if you want to try that as well. With the expansion of the patio that's going to be across the street, it only makes sense to allow traffic to stop, to clearly see pedestrians that might desire to walk across. I'm aware of the patron or the, the community member, Ms. Glory, that has written the appeal. She lives right across the street from Culture Coffee. This is, probably affects her more than anyone else. We have had the privilege, our, my kids and myself, as our lawn business, to service her property for a number of years, to cut her grass and maintain her property. She's a resident of the community. She oftentimes has envoiced to me personally some of her own opinions and thoughts, which I've come to appreciate, don't necessarily always agree with, but I do appreciate her as a neighbor. As it has been said, though, Stonewall now is a, is a pass-through, all the way from 4th to 8th Street. There is increased craft, traffic through that area. I notice that oftentimes when we're over there cutting her grass, or we're across the street at Bistro. Again, the issue for me, for that to be supportive, is to keep the stop sign in place, because it does-
30 seconds, please.
...stop traffic from coming through. The other thing I wanted to say is, I also do appreciate our councilwoman Nice, for her making herself available. This situation came up, she took my call, she heard my concerns, and I do believe, she also believes in the concerns of the residents as well as the business owners. She expressed even a desire to talk to Ms. Glory, which is a neighbor that made the appeal, as well as our president, Ms. Davis, and for that, I do appreciate Councilwoman Nice for doing that. So I do also support keeping the stop sign in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Washington?
Well now, I'm sure all of you are aware by now that the voters, on June 28th, 20, with a 2-2 on the back of it, approved of the $260 million bond to fund, to defray the cost of a $300 million jail, to upgrade the so-called living standards for prisoners held are in. Really now, this is a joke. You're not trying to build a bigger jail to make easy the lives of those you confined? What you are doing is that you are also promoting the interest of the Oklahoma Greater Chamber of Commerce, which we know you two gentlemen set on their boards as well, don't we? Now then, again, Michael not going to pull any punches, 'cause we all need to know about this, because it is this city agency that has signed a contract with the county officials to hold its citizens in that jail called Oklahoma County Detention Center. Now then, this interest that we're talking about here is not for the further development or health, safety concerns, and security of inmates or detainees. No, on the contrary, it's designed to put the money into the pockets of the already wealthy people who are gonna divert those funds targeted for jail to other interests that some of us know about. But it takes a lot of education, it takes a lot of wise wisdom and overstandings, like someone myself who has, to give you the better rundown on what needs to be and what will happen in that regard. Inmates are supposed to have so-called an annexed medical facility? You want to build an 1,800-man jail, male or female? Watch this one. And then you want to annex a medical facility? Watch this one, though. So we're talking about an 18-man facility, and yet, the jury is out on how many is going to be actually put into the medical facility. So in reality, we're looking at possibly 2,400 inmates being controlled by the county officials, aren't we? Now then, what do you come in at? It comes in by you establishing and sending in your individual independent agencies, your investigators, to make sure these prisoners are given the added protection that's needed to satisfy their mental, physical, and emotional well-being.
30 seconds, please.
Thank you, ma'am, 30. Oh my God, 30 hits me, I just get started, rumbling. Let me say, though, this is a farce, it needs to be corrected, and we need to revisit it. You need to take interest in your people that you have set over there in Oklahoma County Detention Center, because their interest is not in those people, but in the interest of money. You're gonna build a bigger jail, and you don't have but a handful of people already operating a 12-hundred facility jail. Look at the influx of people that you already, obviously, you're marketing to come in. That's why you want to build a bigger one. And then guess what? Closing. Like that one, you're gonna have an influx of an overcrowded situation that's going to assert and hurt those confined. Thank y'all very much.
Guy Peters? Peters, sorry.
Good morning, Horseshoe. Guy Peters, 3136 Southwest 28th Street, Ward 6, Jo Beth Hammond. Thank you. I came to you about two months, I think, less than two months ago concerning the house over there, and you said you would be there. I haven't heard from you since, but I have heard from your new competitor that, come election time, about, we've had a nice conversation concerning the situation, so I'm kind of disturbed by the fact that I haven't heard from my city council, elected city council member, but I've heard against the candidate of my city council member. So I'm asking-
I don't have your contact information, so I'd ask you to reach out to me so I could have that. So if you're able to email me that, I can, happy to respond.
Okay, so you have my council member on that, you have that phone number on my form, so that. So another thing about that area is, is that we find out a lot of campsites and everything in that area. We have people littering that area, we have businesses and houses being defaced in that area, and I'm asking something to be done in that area. Beautiful downtown Oklahoma City is getting a lot of investment and a lot of nice shiny things, but outside of that area, we're going to trash, and I am asking for something to be done. It's nice that we have the Omni, it's nice that we have all these nice shiny things, and I celebrate that every, you know, every chance I get through the events that I go to, but outside of this area is really suffering of the dilapidated buildings that I see that people don't have the time to report, okay? So what I'm saying here is, I'm asking- So what I'm saying here is, I'm asking for you to reach out, because I'm getting tired of it. I'm really getting tired of it. I learned a long time ago, be the change you want to see, and I've influenced a lot of people on my street to kind of clean up their areas and be better neighbors and stuff like that. You know, that's the be the change you want to see, but some people, you can't change.
30 seconds, please.
And I'm asking you your help, to help me find help for these people, so that they can find change, to be better citizens, and to respect their neighbors. It's getting tiresome. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the residents who have signed up to speak, which brings us to item 14, adjournment, and we have no further business. We are adjourned.